Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session for February 13th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order, ask everybody to mute your cellphones, and I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Appitak.
Here.
Trustee Orsek.
Here.
Trustee Handler.
Here.
Trustee Dearborn.
Here.
Trustee Albenson, not present yet, and Trustee Dolman.
Here.
And President Rents.
Present. Okay, item two is public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to address council on items that are not in the agenda, welcome to come on up to the podium and share your thoughts.
Things turn in here. Hello. Hello, Ted Winachenko. So first, you know, I think it was good what you guys did last week. I think it's great, but I find the dichotomy fascinating. President Holland was here, former President Holland was here, and you know, like she pointed out, this was talked about. In fact, they talked a lot about the street and beaches during her time as president, but they also talked about the Burtling sidewalk. In fact, there were multiple public meetings about this. There was a police study about this when they finally decided that there was a lot of opinions on both sides and they were going to close it temporarily and then reevaluate. And of course, 20 years went by and then the owners of that sidewalk approached staff and staff and staff meetings made a determination that they would go ahead and sell the whole thing. And then at two, again, secret meetings by the council, the council decided to go ahead and give that sidewalk away. Finally, in November of '22, they had an open meeting, which, you know, wasn't really well advertised, kind of went under the radar like I think it was intended to, and now the sidewalk is gone as of September of last year. And make no mistake, it was given away in secret meetings. As Brian Norcas said in an email, in October of 2022, a full month before the council ever met publicly on the matter, as you, I believe you may already be aware, the village council authorized staff proceeding with the transfer of ownership of the pathway. Those are his words in an email to the owners of the adjoining properties a month before the council ever took any public action on it. So either he was clairvoyant, maybe he is, or the council acted improperly. And now, in December of last year, after a closed meeting, which lasted all of 30 minutes and the council reviewed, approved the agendas for 45 closed session meetings, and then chose to reaffirm that the agendas or the meeting minutes for 120, give or take, closed sessions still needed to be remained private, it chose to keep those meeting minutes private. And again, why? Why would those meeting minutes, the tapes are now gone, they've been destroyed, okay, but the minutes, why would they need to be kept private? What privacy is necessary in protecting discussions about setting a price for a piece of village property that has now been irrevocably transferred and given away with no opportunity to undo the damage? There is none. There is no reason why those meeting minutes should be private any longer. So I know it's hard, but I think, you know, I got about, you know, the meeting was on the 19th, so 60 days from the 19th is, I think, the 17th, if my math is right, of this month. And, you know, I don't know what the standard is for what public bodies have to do to decide that meeting minutes are still secret, should be K main secret, but it seems like that whatever that standard is, reviewing 120 meetings in the span of, give or take, 15 minutes and making that determination seems like it really doesn't meet a burden of any reasonable review. So I'm sorry, but I'm disappointed. I'm happy about the other thing, but I'm disappointed that we couldn't have generalized that to other actions. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Ted. There's nobody else here for public comments, so I'll close that and we'll move forward with the item for discussion tonight. Repair of turbine number four at the electric plant and future of continued steam turbine and boiler operations. In September 2023, council authorized funding for an inspection of turbine number four that is currently inoperable. Tonight, council will review staff's analysis of the inspection report and provide policy direction regarding the repair of turbine number four and the future of steam generation. And Brian is here tonight to walk us through the choices.
Good evening. Thanks for the introduction, President Rents. So the agenda, the topics I'm going to cover tonight is provide a brief background on the overview of steam generation. It's not going to be a repeat, I promise you, of the July 23 study session. We'll talk specifically about turbine four, boiler four, and then we'll go through some analysis, which includes cost projections on the repairs and then payback periods and financials, and then come to some conclusions or recommendations for you to come to a conclusion on, excuse me. So again, the overview of the electric plant, we have three steam turbines. Tonight's meeting is focused on the steam operation, not to be confused with the two diesel generators are there. So really, none of this discussion is based on the two diesel units that are there. This is related to the steam turbines and the boilers. So we have three steam turbines. The average age of those three steam turbines up there is a little over 70 years old. There's four boilers. The average age of the boilers are 72, and tonight's topic is focused specifically on turbine number four and boiler number four is the first part of my presentation. So as mentioned in the introduction, turbine number four is currently out of service and we budgeted $650,000 for its repair in 2024. As I mentioned in previous meetings, the turbine's kind of like the transmission and the boiler's the engine, if you're using a car analogy. My concern was presenting a recommendation to fix turbine four, or the transmission, but showing up next year to talk about the engine and then you just saying, well, we didn't want to fix the engine is going to, would be not a good disconversation, especially if we leave some, something stranded. So we spent some time looking at boiler number four as well. That's currently in the capital plan for next year for 1.4 million, so in budget year 2025. So as you recall, with turbine four is out of service, we retained the services of the Progress Group. It's a firm that's done turbine repair work at the power plant before, and they were awarded a contract for a little over $168,000 to do what we call an open and inspect. So they disassembled the steam path part of the turbine, pulled the lid off of it and looked inside and prepared a recommendation. So none of the material was sent offsite, which would be the next step, where non-destructive evaluation, but basically looked just at what physically they could see wrong on the inside of the turbine. They basically, they presented that report to staff at the end of the last year and came down to, I mean, it's a multi-page report, but you can come down to basically two common themes. One, the radial bearings are worn or grooved and need to be rebuilt or remanufactured, and several stages of the turbine blading, and I'll talk more about what the blading is, but several stages of the turbine blading need to be replaced.
Have they been replaced before? I'm sorry.
Not to my knowledge. If they have, it was prior to my arrival in Winnetka, so it had been prior to 2007.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure.
So the turbine blades are what takes the high pressure, high temperature speed, steam, excuse me, coming into the turbine and creates the rotation for the generator. So there's, in this particular turbine, there's 15 stages, and I've got a photo that'll show, but basically the blading is deteriorated from corrosion and the erosion of the steam passing through it. In several spots, the blading's gotten so thin that pieces are breaking off, and that material is going through the other stages and causing additional damage as it passes through the turbine. So this is, if you look at this photo up here, what you'll see is on those ragged edges, I'll point to the, on the left here, those ragged edges, there's pieces of that missing of the turbine. So over here, for those of you who are looking over here, these right here, these little grooves, that's where a foreign material blade is broken, is pass, that little piece is passing through the other stages of the turbine. So in essence, the deteriorated state of the blading is leading or aggravating the condition and other stages as it deterior, is deteriorated and as pieces break off, that is passing through the other stages of the, of the turbine. So the cost estimate that the Progress Group provided to the staff to make the required repairs, which would be is to take this offsite, replace six rows of the turbine blading, address the bearings and seals, balance it, and reassemble it is $992,500. They're very clear in saying, while we don't know of any problem, but they're very clear in saying that part of that process would be to do non-destructive evaluation, to look for other metal fatiguing or cracks in other parts of the rotor that cannot be done on site. So the $992,500 is not an absolute number. I'd like to think that's what it could get repaired for, but there is the caveat that they could find additional stuff that needs to be addressed when it's taken offsite and what they call the NDA is performed. The other two major components of the overall turbine is the rotor and the exciter. So the rotor is the, where the magnetic field, we repaired that last year. That was an unplanned repair in 2023 at a cost of $574,000. The exciter end is a part that's used to help adjust the voltage, for those of you who toured the plant, it's a very small piece at the very end, the oval housing. That would have to be addressed as part of this overhaul as well. It's deteriorated as far as the insulation and the mechanical components need to be dealt with, so that's, looks like a cost of about $85,000. So for turbine number four, right now, not including what may be identified in the NDA, we're looking at over a million dollars to return it to service. So again, using my analogy of the car, engine and transmission, let's talk about the engine for a minute. So boiler number four, so the boilers, as you recall from my prior presentation, all the boilers feed into a common header, and the steam can go from one boiler, can be used to power all three turbines. What's, why we're talking about the boiler is the boiler needs a repair. If we don't have sufficient steam, we can't run the turbine to its full output, so it's, it's limited. So in this particular case, we know we have a repair in boiler number four coming down next year. And as I, when I get further into this, you're going to see that the steam output of boiler four is almost a direct match to the steam requirements of turbine four. So staff has started to refer to this as four and four decision, the turbine and the boiler. This boiler was manufactured in 1958. Its original source was coal. It was converted over to fuel oil and probably anodally, the only time it ran on fuel oil was probably Y2K, from what I understand from my processors. It's been run on natural gas. It's the second largest boiler. There's 1,100 tubes in there that are called the generating tubes, and the project for next year is related to the replacement of the generation tubes. That's not all the tubes in the spoiler, so it's actually technically a partial re tubing. The generation tubes are the ones that have the most direct contact with the flame from the boiler, the burner. Right now, 95 tubes are plugged, which is roughly 9%, and the rule of thumb is at 10% you should begin re tubing. The boiler is operable, it's in service, it's available for generation. We consider it our most unreliable of the boilers that we have. So as I mentioned, there's a budgeted project in the five-year CIP, it's 1.4 million. With the, knowing that the critical decision that we'd be asking to make, we, under Rob's village manager's authority, we contracted with independent mechanical and actually asked them to put together a replacement proposal for those generation tubes. So again, a partial re tubing. They brought their staff and subcontractors out and looked at the site conditions of the boiler. And to give you a perspective, what has to happen is they have to cut an entry window into the side of the boiler, physically remove the casing, insulation, some of the, what they call the water wall tubes, so the tubes are in the exterior walls of the boiler, and some refractory. They'll take one of the current tubes out, send it offsite so they can replicate the bend of the tubes, because it's not a straight piece of pipe, and then it'll come back and we'll have to individually fish 1,100 tubes through that window and weld them back into place. And then all the material that's removed to get those tubes in, so the refractory, the water tubes, the insulation and casing all have to be put back together, whatever we remove, we've got to put back together at the end. Their cost estimate for 2024 is 1.85 million, and the duration from start to finish is five to six months. As I mentioned earlier, so the yellow highlighted bars, the top one is the boilers, so boiler four, and then turbine four at the bottom in that chart, if you notice, the steam output that count far to the right, even though the steam can go to any of the generators, the turbines, excuse me, there's, in this particular case, it's about a match, four and four are matched up. So the decision that we're asking your consideration how to proceed with turbine four is, the concern is that we don't put you in a position to make a decision where you end up with a stranded investment, where you elect to proceed with turbine four but don't have the full knowledge of the expense that's coming next year when we update the budget for boiler number four. So at this point in time, we're looking at $3 million, 2.9 million. How we arrived at that was the cost of the turbine overhaul, the exciter, and then the partial re tube price was escalated by 3% because this work wouldn't get done until 2025. And then it compares to what's in the five-year CIP, it's a budget of a little over 2 million. So 2.9 million versus, say, 2.1 million. In previous discussions about the budget, we've always talked about capacity credits and there's a couple ways to look at. So from, we get 1.4 million a year for all capacity credits if all units run and pass quarterly tests and there's no equipment problems. The steam units account for 1.2 million, and how we arrive at that is that it's $4 a kilowatt-month times the dedicated output. So turbine number four generates on an annual basis $415,200. Simple payback analogy would be is we'd have, if we elect to proceed with the repair, assuming no other breakdowns, we need to run this unit 7.2 years to recover it based on just from a capacity credit perspective. This is all the other items that are in the current five, current capital plan, and so you'll see at the top it says 24 to 2035. So although we present publicly to you a five-year CIP, staff actually has a longer-range capital plan for both the water fund and the electric fund. So this is identified items in the longer-range capital plan that are specific to steam generation. So again, this year we're looking at the overhaul on turbine number four. We have multiple hot well pumps that, and boiler feedwater pumps layered in there. Next year, we would be doing a partial re tubing of boiler four and turbine number seven would be overhauled. And then we have some other smaller projects in the out years, but the total is 3.6 million. That's what's been identified. As part of this analysis and kind of stepping back, so beyond looking at turbine four, boiler four, we started looking, as we started peeling this back, what are the expenses from the boiler operations and the turbines? So in the budget book, a lot of detail, we actually track boiler and turbine expense to a specific account. There's a capital account and expense account. So what's on this graph is the actual expenses from 2014 to 2023. And you, where I'm going, which you've seen in the written report, is this is a trending upward. So last year, we booked 415,627 in expense dollars for the boiler and turbine accounts. At that current run rate, if it was to continue, and then, you know, again, it's a trend and it's based on what we've seen in the actuals, but if you trended that, those data points, it puts you close to 900,000 in the year, a little over 900,000 in the year 2035. So this started a whole another round of internal discussions about, okay, what happens if we don't have the steam plant? So we went back through that 2014 period, or, excuse me, 2019, I believe it was, to 2023, and went and looked at the expenses with an eye that says, would it exist if we didn't have the steam plant? If we reduced the steam plant, would some part of it be reduced, or would we have to keep it? And some, you would think on the surface, if you didn't have the steam plant, that this goes away completely, but that's not the case. You still have to do, we still have permit requirements for the air permit and the water permit that are allocated across the diesels and the steam. We still have to maintain the stack. We still have boiler treatment chemicals that we need for the house heating boiler. We're still going to have other ancillary pieces that are in those accounts that we'd still have to maintain. So what we did notice was that we could achieve about, if we did not have the turbines running in the boilers, there'd be about a 68% reduction in those expenses, and that's what that orange line is. That is, you know, jumping forward, that's a 2027, and I'll talk more about why 2027 was picked, but basically if steam generation ceased, we anticipate about a 68% reduction in the trend line. In past budget presentations, typically more on like a one-year perspective, we've compared operating costs and project costs versus capacity credits on a one-year basis. This has been done for the period of 2024 through September 2035. September's 2035 is when our existing IMEA contract ends. If all the units operate correctly from January 1 of 2024, which we know that's not the case, but all the way through September 2035, we'd have the potential to earn $14,297,400 of credits. So then we looked at what are our known costs that are going to come up in this period. So what we know is that we're, if we make a decision to repair turbine four, we're probably still going to lose six months of credits this year, so that's 207,600. We've already talked about the repair costs, the boiler costs, the other identified capital projects that were in that list I just reviewed, we have projected O and M expense, and that's that trend line year over year of the expenses. One of the things that came out in our discussion is we don't currently plan for one large unplanned event. So we sat and talked, what's likely to be the next proverbial shoot of fall well? Last year, it was the rotor. Two years before that, it was a rotor, and coincidentally enough, number seven turbine has never had a rotor rewound that I'm aware of. So we budgeted in this analysis that probably between, it's realistic to think that between now and 2035, that we'd have an unplanned rotor expense. So that's one capital event. Then we have utility experience, and we talked about potentially if there's, steam generation did not exist, there's, likely you would reduce the headcount of the staffing by two people. If it was completely gone, the significance of maintenance activities and the number of people you're required to operate the diesels in the water plant and the electric system is a change in where we're currently staffed at. And where we're staffed at now is we have to have multiple people, for running generation like the steam units, it's multiple people in addition to running the water plant. So when you take, I'm sorry, Kristen, back up a second. When you take that into account, back up one more to the capacity credits, when you take that into account, this is, this is showing that we'll, the expenses will exceed our expected capacity credits by 2.3 million. Sorry. Tim's, the finance department, Tim's staff helped us provide another perspective in this analysis, and we looked at like a financial scenario. So we created three scenarios to look at. Scenario one, we called it the all-ins. We're going to make all the repairs, we're going to do all the capital projects, we've got the expense, no changes in staffing. We are going to add in one unplanned event, that's that $850,000 item, and we had Tim put it in at 2031, so he ran cash projections for that scenario. Scenario two was the same as scenario one, except we elect not to do the repairs to turbine four and boiler four. And scenario three is we contemplate the retirement, we don't make the repairs to turbine four, boiler four, and we contemplate winding down steam generation. Again, steam generation, not the diesels, in 2027. So this is the cash, the ending year-end cash balance projections for the electric fund, and what you see is the cash, the fund balance is in a more positive position in scenario three. And before Trustee Dearborn asked me, in 2029, we see cash drop, that's the contemplated year that we would add two new diesels into the system. Those, that's going to be roughly about a $7 million project, and it's contemplated right now from the staff perspective that the water fund would pay part of the $7 million in addition to the electric funds. So that's why you see the cash drop from '28 to '29. From this perspective, the financials are leaning towards that this is going to, the steam is having an adverse impact in the long run on the financial position of electric So the reason we selected 1127 for discussion was a couple things are in motion and play and things that need to happen. So first, we use the hot water from the electric plant, the boilers, under a permit to once-a-year backflash, backflush, excuse me, the intakes to manage the zebra mussels, and so the water fund needs to install, similar to other water plants, a chemical feed type system to manage zebra mussels. That's in our multi-year plan, but it's not, wasn't eminently planned for in the next couple of years. Two is we're still, I think it's still yet to be determined if we're going to have a warranty claim on our Northfield transformer. We've been reporting that we're still, staff has still not done the final acceptance. It's in service, providing power today, but we're still monitoring it with the vendor, so that's still an open item. Under existing contract, when it's not a forced outage, like an equipment failure, we're supposed to provide IMEA one-year notice so they can unwind the generators from any agreements that they've constructed to use that power. And the last plan is, basically is a transition plan on staffing. At this point in time, really looking at this can be done through attrition. So for that reason, we picked the 1127 for all those moving pieces as opposed to just saying, look at it today. Short term, and there's a lot of heavy lifting here, but short term, we're still on the clock with IMEA to get turbine number four back. So I'm hoping through the discussion tonight, at the very least, that can get some policy direction on how you want to proceed with the repair of turbine number four, whether staff should be bringing you back a contract for the repair of the unit, or whether there's consensus on how we move to get to a decision on that. And then there's the longer-term discussion on related to continued steam operation. And that's the end of my prepared remarks.
Is this going, but to your point about...
Yeah.
The one-year notice for the IMEA, is this considered a failure? So the one-year doesn't apply?
Turbine four is considered a failure. So we're, they understand, and we would not be the first community that's made a decision not to return a unit. They understand that this decision is being made, has yet to be made. We've been reporting out on progress of what we're doing. For example, updated them when you awarded the contract for the open inspect. Where, where it would, where they would want the one-year notice is we have existing units that are running, are intent to wind those down. If they're functioning now, they want one year's notice for that.
Okay.
So the turbine four is out of service, we can make that, that decision without a one-year notice. We're not required to fix it, give notice and shut it down.
How much does the new Northfield transformer compensate, if at all, for turbine four and boiler four with regard to energy?
Turbine four, I think, Nick, you can correct me, but without turbine four, with the other two turbines and the diesels, we can still cover ourself on loss of a transformer. So the original, kind of rewinding back, is so we had what was called, previous village manager called the three-legged stool. So you had the commet tie lines, Northfield substation and the power plant. On a peak summer day, you had to have two of those three in service to cover the load. So you always planned on if one of these goes away, some type of accident or equipment failure, the other two cover the system load. We knew, and part of the Northfield number two transformer was planning for the future, we knew that these units were 70-plus years old, that we're going to need at some point to move away from saying the power plant's the third leg of the stool, so we put the second transformer in at Northfield. So we have, basically now we have a chair instead of a stool, we have a four-legged chair. We still need two of those four. Taking the power plant out of the equation, number four turbine out of the equation, we're still covered. We're just planning till we work through this piece with the OEM on that transformer and fully accept that transformer, we're just holding it for contingency purposes, not number four, but the other two generally.
Northfield number two was approximately, what, Brian, a seven-to-10-year planning exercise?
Yeah. By the time it went from, through the whole budgeting process and ordering and, and the incremental improvements we had to make to accept the firewall, the fire suppression.
Get it, yeah. Okay, a couple things.
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, I thought it was a great report. When I'm, when I see some of these, I always, I'm waiting for somebody to lead the witness to where they want to go, and you really didn't. You're very clear and objective about both sides and what it means, so I thank you for that because it helps us get through this much more quickly. For IMEA, is this, is this, is the complexity to go up, down, I mean, is there, do you project energy needs, will they give us more, will they, are they going to reduce it, any, any idea of the future?
So their current position, when we come to speak to you about the contract extension, which is on your radar screen?
Right.
They're, they've committed to hold the, what capacity credit values to their current value in the contract extension. So they will not go lower than they currently are. They've also said they'll revisit them and see if they can make changes in the future, there's no commitment date. Based on market data that they've shown to the board members and in presentations, it's like, in, depending on what cycle of like the last five years you look at, in some periods of time, they could be paying more, could have been paying more credits, and other periods of time, they would have a rough time justifying that they're paying us as much as they are.
But it's not like they're in
The market's been so up and down.
Right. It's not like they're in any type of dire need or constraints, or you, you, they really need you to be up. I mean, I guess that's my, the way I look at it.
No, I mean, so they're, so the way I would look at it from their perspective is they contracted with us when we joined to pay those credits.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So from the other 30, from the 31 other members, they're looking for the agency staff to extract value from what they have to pay us at 1.4 million. So they're looking at through demand response programs with the transmission system operator, potentially with ComEd, in market conditions, like we've talked about, the polar vortexes where they had the diesels running or the peak summer days, they're trying to extract value from the market, so saving the other member, the whole, all of us, including Winneka, a value that they can say that it makes sense to pay 1.4 million for this capacity. I wouldn't bank on that they're going to raise them between now, so what they said, this is the floor.
The, you're spot on about your, your assessment of planning for another rotor, because I look at it like buying an old house, I've never, when I, when I bought an old house, I never met my, it was always over my budget because something always went wrong.
Yeah.
And it was always expensive. So I think it's a pretty sober look at, looking at that equipment and what's, continues to, you know, blades fraction, you know, fracturing off, it's
Yeah, I mean, it's sober, and like I said, we, when we sat and talked about it, I was like, well, this is most likely the, when, we can't predict when, but it's most likely that if we continue to run it, we should be prepared to deal with that situation.
No, it's, it's good. Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
So Brian, oh, I'm sorry, can I go? Just, you mentioned that in 2029 for scenario three, the reason the fund drops is because of the addition of two diesel.
Should be dropping in all three scenarios. So in all three scenarios
Yes, okay, I guess I have to say I'm, I'm looking at scenario three primarily. So my question is, but we're, but under scenario three, we'd be retiring all the steam units in 2026?
Under scenario, correct, at the end of 2026.
So, so therefore the, I'm, I'm almost just asking for confirmation of my understanding, so the 27 and 28 numbers are, balances going up are because of the avoidance of spending because we will no longer have
Have the generation, correct.
Okay, why would we wait till 2029 to put the two diesels in if we've retired the entire steam system?
I could tell you the strategy why it's where it's currently at, and then you could, we could go from there. So we're currently in the middle of our air permitting cycle with the IAPA, it's generally a five-year permit. I feel fairly confident that we will get the existing fleet over the goal line, but that's, I guess you should never say that until you know for sure, but the diesels are on the edge of current emission regulations, I feel pretty confident we could get them over. If they were not to get over the goal line, there's a process, while it be regulatory painful, that we could go and try to seek some relief with the thought that we're planning to put new, a new fleet in. Secondly is they're from 1978 and '79 roughly is when they were installed, so it's time to start thinking about replacing them, we need them for the water plant at some level. So the logic for '29 was, we're going to be at the end of potentially an air permit cycle. If we're on the cusp of not getting the current units over the goal line, we're going to be, have to stare that, face that consequence at a future. And then with the other part is generally, we've been pay-as-you-go type of, we haven't done bonding. So this would be a multi-year, you'd start with like, is probably as, literally as early as 2026, we'd start engineering and permitting work. It's going to be a two-year permitting cycle to get this over the goal line.
Okay.
It's going to be engineering, and the generators have a one-year lead time.
Thank you.
So Brian, the capacity credits, it looks to be, rough math, about in total, $300 per resident, per household, per year, it's a million two, what do we have, 4,000 households? I mean, I just, I learned better than, I've learned a long time ago, I'm not going to do math at the podium, so I'll, I'll let you keep going, I'll trust your numbers. Okay, so the turbine four, which provides 400,000, I'm just trying to get a sense of how this impacts resident electric bills.
So in this
It's 100 bucks a household is
Well, yeah, if you're going to go 4,000 residents.
Kind of what I was getting at there, so in context, it's about 100. Boiler four, why would we keep that going? I, I, I mean, I read the explanation and
So, here's the dilemma, is like, you could fix turbine four, and we can run it with the other boilers, but what will happen is when we go to do our tests with the IMEA, and we have to run the units and show that they can all run, or we do the transmission test, I'll be able to run all three turbines if you fix four, we won't have enough steam to get them all to four output. So at some point, whether we declare it or not, it will become apparent to IMEA that they're not going to want to pay 1.2 million dollars for that level of output that we cannot produce.
Right, but if you make the assumption for the moment that turbine four doesn't make sense to go on.
Correct.
I mean, that, that the unknown expenditures, to Rob's point, anything could, you could put the money in now, and then something could happen next year, it's just the way it seems to be going here. If you make that assumption to take that out of service, would you take boiler four out of service and avoid that expenditure?
As outlined in the report, was like, we'd probably run it until it hits the next repair and then make that decision. So it's in service now.
So the million nine on that, where does that
We wouldn't retube it, so we would say
Yes, we wouldn't retube it.
We wouldn't retube it, we'd keep it for the current generating season. If we had to run it because we had a problem with another boiler, we'd run it, but should we run it and it has a significant failure, we'd say we're done. We wouldn't be asking you to waive off turbine four and then invest over a million dollars in boiler four, that's not what we're recommending.
Okay, so the 2.9 million, if you don't do turbine four, there's no 2.9 million capital expenditure?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the short-term impact is four, the contractor would come and put the lid back on four, it'd be mothballed in its current state, we wouldn't like cut it apart or anything like that, they'd take their tools offsite, it'd be there, we'd have to give notice, IMEA, that we don't have an intention to repair it, and it'd be there. Four boiler would be available to use until such time it has a significant expense to fix it, and then we wouldn't fix it.
So the electric fund resources would go up for future use, whatever, and the cost to residents would go up on the order of, at the moment, $100 a year, depending on how these other systems play out over time, you take them. What, where you're going here is the capacity credits would be going away.
Yeah, so it would be, basically the end, end state is you fast forward to the end, we'd be getting down to around 200,000 of capacity credits.
And then someone in 2035, as you approach 2035, you have this burgeoning fund, the electric fund, has gone up and up in value, there's $10 million, whatever it is, maybe it's going up more than that, and whoever is at this table will start to decide, you'll have the IMEA contract, you might generate your own power, you might, who knows what's going to be happening then.
Well, that's correct, but I think we, staff will be looking for a decision prior to that point, so we're looking like literally in 2026, the groundwork would start for 2029. You're going to start the engineering for those new diesels, because again, it's a two-year, you're, you're not going to, will not be in a position where we could say, we want to put this in in 2029 and appropriate the money in 2029 and get it constructed. It'll be a two-year permitting cycle with the IAPA, and then there's going to be some level of design that has to happen. And then you have a one-year lead time, so you're literally to, to put, to whether we add two as an interim step, or we do a full replacement of the two existing diesels, we will likely begin that process if the council so directs it in the budget process in 2026. So you'd start with some preliminary engineering, permitting, as you get into like 2028, you'd have to issue a request for a proposal for the actual units, assuming you had your air permit lined up, and then in 2029, you construct it.
But the diesels aren't replacing
The diesels are not, so you're
Our generation.
The diesels, well, the beauty of the diesels is it's a quick start, you need it for your water plant.
Right.
And you need to address, at some point, we need to address the 1979 units that are there. They're not, the diesels that we're contemplating will not replace the 1.4 million dollars in capacity credits for two reasons. Diesel generation's paid at $3.20 a kilowatt a month, steam is paid at $4 a kilowatt a month, so you get more capacity credits, and the physical output of the steam turbines far exceeds, so one of the diesel units is 2,500 KW, turbine number four is 8,560 KW. So you'd have to have four units to equate, four diesels to equate to what this one turbine is.
What does a diesel cost?
I think right now, we're estimating 7 million for two of them. That's very preliminary. We've got numbers from Caterpillar representative, but really the question is, where we're going to put them in, the cost to get them in, because you remember, quick history lesson, to get them in the current building, they took the backside of the building out, so the west side of the building, all that masonry work was taken out, and they had to crane them through the side of the building, and then after they're installed, re-bricked the building. So installation cost is not a, it's going to be significant.
So just piecing it together, cost benefit, throw $3 million at keeping steam going versus retiring and then thinking down the road, $7 million for maybe more efficient, but doesn't produce as much output, maybe like a third of the output.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, do we keep throwing money at
Right.
An old-school technology that is super powerful, but expensive to maintain? Or do we plan for the future and think about modern technology, but whatever, not as powerful and more expensive to install? I'm guessing, is diesel more efficient to run than steam?
Probably, and the reason I'm hedging is that our boilers were originally on coal and then basically converted to natural gas, so there's some inefficiency in this whole process and how we're operating as compared to like, if you would buy like a jet engine type of turbine that could be matched the output, so you could look at a technology like jet engine turbines, I don't know if you could fit it physically in the building down there, so there's, I guess, I believe it'd be more, in its current state, the diesel would be more efficient than how we're running the old power plant.
If, if we were from scratch, putting together a plant?
If you're doing it from scratch, the question would be is you, if you're going to go full self-sufficiency, like the 32 megawatts we have now, you're not going to do it all with diesels, you'd have some type of like jet turbine generator.
Right.
And then you'd have probably some diesels for like managing the peaks.
Taking a step back, of the power we generate, how much of it do we actually use ourselves, or, or are we just in a situation where we're feeding it to the IMEA for others?
So we use 100% of it here, so, but to give you one step more, so remember on those peak days, whether it's the polar vortex or the summer peak days, trends, the price of power on the market is exceedingly high. So what IMEA is doing for those members that have generation is they're calling us to run, the power is really being used in Winneka, but what it does is means they don't have to buy power from somebody else at a higher cost. So to answer intellectually correct, we're using the power here, that's so they don't have to go buy the power that we need from somebody else at a higher cost than what can be generated locally.
What happens if the power goes out across whatever, all these member communities, like, are we, do we serve ourselves first, do we put the oxygen mask on ourselves before we serve others?
So if there was a situation where it was a local emergency, we can run the generation for Winneka, and depending on what time of year, so if it's this time of year today, without looking, we're probably at 14 megawatts, we can generate 32 megawatts, we could run as an island. A July, third day of 90-degree heat in the middle of July, we're probably pushing 40 megawatts, again, we only have 32 megawatts, so on a peak summer day, we do not have enough generation to carry the whole village.
If we were to eventually replace everything, do we have the physical space to be able to, with the new technology, provide enough power to serve the entire village?
Did you say physical space, like using the village yards? Yes, if you say physical space at the plant, I think it'd be an expensive engineering project.
It would also depend upon the technology.
Depend on the technology, I mean, again, that's all, it's all shoehorned in a very tight, you've been in the plants, all shoehorned in a very tight facility, and we'd have to, you have to, to, just to get that stuff in and out, we have to take part of the building apart to get it physically in.
I mean, I think there's really two decisions we're starting to make, one is what we do in the short term right now with the repairs, but then it begs the larger question long-term, what do we want to do as a village with power generation?
And things also
EFC is working on that question behind the scenes to present to us.
Great, I think it's, and also
Not in the background.
Yeah, there's also a, a question mark upon technology, and I was talking to Robbie, and I mean, is there hydrogen, is there other, I mean, I look at, we're having Darren Woods from Exxon speak, and he's, I mean, the things they're looking at right now, I mean, they're going to, it's going to smaller, cheaper, hopefully, way to look at this, and that's by locking us in, something we have to look at.
Yeah, trustee Dolan.
Yeah, just a quick question about the kind of trade-off between diesel and steam. I've got to believe that there's bigger air quality issues with the diesel systems.
So they, you have to have an air permit for basically, so let me rewind, so in all likelihood, the diesels, I refer to them as diesels, in all likelihood, what would be put in, and what we've got prices for is what they call dual fuel. So you can run, the unit's current technology can run diesel fuel or natural gas. The reason you'd go dual fuel is the following, you'll probably remember I talked to you about running during the polar vortex, North Shore Gas issued flow restraints saying, we don't want you consuming natural gas, so if we needed to run on a polar vortex day, we're probably running on diesel fuel. If it's a 90-degree day in July, we're probably better off to have the ability to run natural gas. But there's literally been times where the agency has elected not to start the boilers because of the curtailment from North Shore Gas for natural gas flow, and the subsequent unknown penalty that we would, not we, but the IMEA would pay.
Brian?
Well, just one more question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You said we're pay-as-we-go, so we don't have, despite these turbines and boilers being, you know, 70 years old, or roughly 50, at least 50 years old in one instance, more than 50 years old, I guess.
There's
We didn't have any reserves to plan for the replacements of this equipment, right? So
Yeah, they're fully depreciated, and there's, to my knowledge, and there's, there's never been a plan, like, there's never been a stated policy of the village council since I've been here that says plan for the exact replacement or significant, the same size of generation output. I'm, I've maintained that we were going to have to replace the diesels, I think it meant I think it makes sense to have two of them because inevitably one will be out of service. And you need those diesels not only for, the intent of the diesels originally was to provide quick start power to bring the plant up because you need power to start a coal plant. The way we're using it now is the diesels not only back up the water plant, you can run the power from the power plant out to the yards, run the Willow Road reservoir and the Hibbert Road pump station, stormwater pump station. And you pick up public safety and the AT&amp;T building along the way. The, what's contemplated in the 29 plan would be is two units, the same size as what we got. So two, 2.5 megawatt units. The interesting debate that Nick and I and other people have had is where would you put them? And maybe you put one at the power plant and one out the yards. Maybe you put two at the power plant and you want, trustee Alvinson's point, maybe you want two more out if the economics worked out and you wanted to put four out, two out there at the yards. So there's some maneuvering, but we're required for the water plant to have backup generation. Now, by no means do you need 2.5 megawatt units to run the water plant. It's probably closer to about 1.5 megawatts or one. But we're going to come to the same conclusion with the diesels. I mean, they're 19, they were installed in 1979. So at some point, we're going to have to replace those.
Just to clarify, are you talking about just replacement? Or you, you at least have to have two, it sounds like.
I would recommend that you always have two because inevitably one will need a part or will be out of service. And are you going to be comfortable knowing that your backup to your water plant's out of service because you didn't have a spare unit?
But long-term, even if you go beyond the IMEA, kind of, you know, beyond the contract and there's a decision that's made, we're out of generation. We're not going to participate in the generation and we're just going to be like other North Shore communities.
That's, that was really a policy decision disorder that you need, you could establish. So the dichotomy is you could elect to continue a generation path through either new technology, jet turbines, more diesels. Or I'll say you go the path of, not to pick on them, but St. Charles and Naperville. They have no generation. St. Charles and Naperville are non-generating members.
Right.
So it's a, it's a local decision that would, that's, would be the policy direction.
Right. And we're not talking about that tonight. But I'm just to clarify, when we talk about diesel replacement, you need at least roughly two for the water pump plant. And then the question would become whether you replace the older aging diesels dual fuel.
Yeah, so without getting into too many details, and why was Nicholas and I and others was, if I, if you had the real estate, you probably would try to give yourself some interim flexibility. You'd keep your two old ones, assuming you can keep them permitted and they're not costing you, and add in two more. Then under the IMEA contract, if one of the old units fails, you can substitute the new one in at no penalty. On a year-by-year situation, you can negotiate. You're not going to be guaranteed the credits on the two new units, but you can, they're called non-dedicated generation. And they'll give you mark, a market credit. So Rock Falls is an example of that. They put in extra, they put in multiple diesels. They kept some of their old ones and new ones. They, they didn't ask to change their dedicated capacity. They said, we're going to run these and per our contract. But if one of these has a problem, to avoid the penalty of losing capacity credits, they can substitute a new one in. They don't get guaranteed on all the capacity credits. They only get guaranteed what's in their contract. These other ones, they, they just choose that due to their situation, they want to have extra. We also have to face, there is an uncertainty that we might not be able to get those two units over the goal line at the next air permit cycle.
So Brian, back to trustee Alvinson's question about generation. On average, annually, what percent of Winnetka power use is actually generated by the plant?
I mean, it's got to be like less than 5%, less than 3%.
Less than 5%.
In the previous report, I can flip back and look at how many hours a year we run. But I mean, again, we're, it's a very small fraction.
Okay. Yeah. And then our, our distribution network, our system is relatively good condition?
Yeah, I think from, so unlike the water distribution system, the electric cabling is in a much better situation. So I mean, there's, most of the 12 KV circuits, what I'll call the main stem backbone has been replaced. And we're down to the four KV circuits, which is four, and we're well underway in those. The, one of the items that Nicholas has been tracking is the age of our pad, our pad-mounted transformers are getting up there. But due to market prices and lead time, I don't see that we're going to start a proactive replacement program. And we haven't had failures on our pad mounts. So, but, so the pad mount fleet is aging, but the cable system has been replaced. So yeah, that distribution system is in good shape.
So at the risk of bursting the bubble of a lot of residents, Winnetka, there's a perception amongst many that we are a, an island. We generate our own power. You know, when Glencoe's down because ComEd can't get them, we're up and about and we're so on and so forth. The reason that we have such great service is we have great distribution and great staff that comes out dedicated to Winnetka. We're not hostage to ComEd. But we are not a self-generating community.
Yeah, I mean, that's correct in that sense.
So if we had no generation, it would be an incremental decline in the generation Winnetka provides to its residents. Because we don't provide that much.
Right. I mean, again, it comes back to.
Be expensive because when we need it, it's expensive.
Comes back to a couple of things. There's generally, one is there's a level of belief that the plant's running, there's quite a few people have perception the plant's running a lot. Or even, maybe even today, it's not. And then there's going to be at some point, coming to a decision on what level of generation does the community desire to have locally? So like, again, using the Winnetka model or say a Naperville model? None versus quite a bit. Princeton, Illinois, they got a lot of diesels. Rock Falls got a hydro plant in diesels. So there's 19 members of the 32 at IMEA have generation. Now, some of their reason for generation is they have one long line that comes from Ameren, Illinois, to their community. And when that line goes down, the whole town is out of power. So they have generators because that's like if they're waiting for Ameren to deal with that one source line that runs all the way out to somewhere in farmland USA.
Well, again, to trustee Alvinson's point, tonight, we're really dealing with turbine four, boiler four. The, the idea of what's going to be, what it looks like in 10 years is not on the table tonight.
Yeah, so I was talking with Andrew Bay and it's like, success looks like to me tonight, getting a decision on what you want me to do with turbine four. That's what success looks like. We're on the clock with IMEA. You have to show, from the timing unit goes out of service, you have to show that you've taken progressive steps to getting it back in service. And you have to have it back in service within two years. Or it's at the boards, not the staff. It's at the other 31 communities to get it to decide if that unit stays in under contract. This is, we're, we're working down that path. So we did the inspection. We hired progress group to come take the lids off. We're presenting the recommendations. So we're comfortably in the time zone and the process that we need to be following. But if we're going to return turbine four to service and we need some direction so we can bring you a contract to start the repairs, because it's going to be multi-months of repair. And if we punt the decision down the path, then, and you decide that you want to repair it, it's like we're under a shot clock to get it back by June of '25. Otherwise, it's not our decision if it stays on the contract. Because then it was out of service for two years.
Couple of questions?
Mind you, with a Tom Hanks movie, The Money Pit. And it's, but it's a, it's a wonderful luxury to have for this village as a backup. But I guess to your point, it is, is it, when it was generating at least break even or something, it was a much easier decision. It's not that easy a decision right now because you see where this is going. And I think you're right, it's going to be, and I, and I believe, I went out there. I looked at the plan, I love, you know, incredible committed staff, really smart, savvy people. Fascinating. But I look at this, ages this equipment and there's, there's little upside on the age with this equipment.
I don't see how it makes sense to put any more money in.
Into that four at least.
Four.
Yeah.
It's heartbreaking.
It is, it's a bummer.
What do you guys think? We got to make a decision tonight, so yeah. I'm in favor of option three. Option three?
Or scenario three?
Scenario three.
Which is retiring all steam generation by 2026.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I was leaning to.
What have you packed into $5.7 million of O and M? I know you showed me this trend line that I'm not buying, but tell me what's in there, Brian.
Hi, this requires a reader. But why don't we pass around just so you can see what's, this is a 605,000. It's in this year's budget, so.
You came prepared for that question.
Because I asked it earlier today.
Yeah, it's one sheet, it's two sides. Go ahead, pass that one around. So this is the boiler and turbine account for the 2024 budget. And basically, when you look at it, it's just, it's all the, it's like everything from refractory repair, replacement of valves, feed pump motors, permitting, boiler control boards, recirculation valves, relays, cleaning of the intake. So again, that cost does not go away. We still need the intake for the diesels. To get into the, what they call the DA tank, that's the de-arianator tank. That, that cost probably stays. Oil filters, parts washing, pumps, rebuilding, mechanical seals, breakers, stack inspection. That's 609,000 that's on the books for this year of repair work at the plant.
And every year you see similar expenses?
Well, in previous years, it's been lower. But what, again, to that point is like, it's just starting to inch up. So yeah, you're just looking at the trend line. And two, two years ago was less than 200,000, President Ren. So if you look at that graphic, I mean, we had a spike, it dropped back down, we had a spike. This year, we're at 605. This is, so this work, the way we build this budget is, comes from basically work with the plant superintendent. And this is what he feels we need to do this year to keep this running. And the, and the context when this was built was you should plan on run this thing till 2035. So tell me what you need to do to keep it running until 2035.
Gotcha.
That was the context which all prior budgets have been built.
So what is, what things do you see? What, I mean, there has to be some major components that look like they're going to continue to cost you a lot of money in the years going forward?
So the ones, the ones that jump, so in the capital plan, we got these feedwater pumps and the boiler pumps. Those are sizable that we.
I'm talking to the O and M more.
On the O and M, it's going to be things like the internal, so the boilers, like we'll do refractory repairs in the boilers. So we had, if you recall, was it last year or the year before? We had like $85,000 in a boiler repair. Because when we had a tube failure, we had to do, then we had to do some asbestos abatement. And then we had to have the boiler repaired. So I think that was 85,000, looking at Nicholas, because I think, so they had some, an 85,000 dollar repair. These are just parts and pieces that they need to do maintenance on. The big ticket items, I think are, the big ticket item that I think will.
Those are all in capital though.
All in capital, with the exception of the one rotor repair on seven. We have not dealt with seven rotor, hasn't failed. That's the one likely unplanned event we think will happen.
Okay. And Tim, the 4.86 million? You guys don't want to retire.
So there was an analysis done on the two identified full-time equivalent positions, running it out from 2024 to 2035. That's all in number. That's not just the salary. That's the salary, the employer, portion of healthcare, social security, Medicare.
So your burden's about 40%, 50%? I mean, 30%? All this.
The, actually, yeah, that was about.
Typically about 40%.
Yeah, it's about 40%.
2027 to 2035.
Well, for the capacity credit analysis, we, we did, that was as of 1-1-2024.
Four, okay.
I know compound interest is a beautiful thing, but this just seems like it really has escalated a lot.
Well, I mean, the assumptions, 3.5% on the salary. That's tied to the recent union contracts, the current market environment. 5% on medical dental, only 2% on life and pension. And then Medicare and social security was just a function of the salary number. So it's, you know, felt was pretty reasonable escalation.
Because this year, you're at about buck 50, buck 60 per person? Maybe, let's get really liberal, say 175.
Correct.
It's 350.
Correct, yeah. All they.
And you're projecting 486,000 a year.
So 340 and then by 2035, it gets up to about a half a million all in.
I'll trust, I'll trust you, but just the numbered, those two numbers are really big and they really determine the decision point.
Well, the.
You know, and that, and that's my concern, is you're throwing $9 million of, everything else is identified as far as the number is concerned. But then you just take $9 million and throw it at the equation and we just, we get, we, there isn't anything substantiating this until Brian showed me this, which helps. I get that, but, you know, that swings the decision one way or another. You understand that, right?
The challenge, yeah, I understand the challenge. We're, I'd like to be able to put a pretty solid mark on the paper. So we're looking, we're looking at actuals and you're trying to predict what's going to fail on a power plant that's 70-plus years old. The average life is over 70.
Oh, I get it.
And so it's like, we're at 600 this year. No, I don't want to be cavalier about it and say, bring it to close sooner than it needs to be. But the problem, I mean, we're at 600 this year, so it's trending up. I, it's a.
I mean, but in fairness, I mean, not to be a contrarian, if you looked over the last 10 years, it was averaging about 200,000, right? And we had two years of.
High.
With significant spike. So you could say, you know, your trend line is there. There was two, you know, major failures, right? You had two repairs at 21.
So the trend line here flattens out, still rising, but not as significant.
Right, right. I mean, not to say, I mean, you're dealing with aging equipment. At some point, they're going to fail.
That's the challenge in trying to predict.
I mean, it's amazing that they've.
And I, Brian, I understand. I just didn't, I just want to make sure you guys aren't being stupid conservative with the numbers. Because, you know, it's a big decision and, you know, you got $9 million there. If you were, if it was 6 million, all of a sudden, the decision, I think, becomes a little harder for us to make because you're close to break even. And the decision point for this particular analysis is really buried in those two numbers. And that, that's my concern. I just, you know, I.
No, I.
And no other repairs?
Turbine four, we had a repair last year.
No, 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 for the next 10 years though, in the analysis.
Yeah, so turbine.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Brian.
So turbine four, if you repair it, we're not forecasting, I mean, we're not forecasting another significant repair. I mean, it's still going to be, now looking at the dates, it's still an aged piece of equipment.
And what are the chances of it?
I mean, likely, we think the likely unplanned repair is rotor number seven. That's like, okay, so first of all, we're carrying turbine seven on the books at 754,000 without opening the general report for next year. So if we were going to proceed with the other two steam turbines, we would be cracking open steam turbine seven next year. 754, based on what we saw from this proposal on six, so turbine seven's bigger. 754, based on what we saw from this proposal on six, so Turbin Seven's bigger, excuse me, from four, is that probably 754 is going to be a light. I mean, I'm just, it's a larger unit, it's due for an overhaul, it's 992 on this unit, so like, I gotta think that 754 is not going to be the number that's going to, we're going to be able to accomplish next year's overhaul, or just based on this proposal.
But for, I mean, the decision right now on four, the decision on four, if, if this was in your house, and you said, "Well, they have to take it away and open up," and there could be...
Four...
Hundreds of thousands of dollars more.
I can, I can wrap my head around fixing Turbin Four. I, I have difficulty encouraging you to consider fixing four turbine and four boiler, because I think that when the boiler company gets into it, there's too much uncertainty, and I haven't done that work enough to have confidence that they'll be able to deliver without coming back saying, "We found this," or "We got this issue," or "We can't do this." Up until the boiler number came back, and Rob will tell you, is like, this was, this flipped in midway of all this research and analysis, when we started with it was, okay, it's going to take a couple of years to pay it back, but let's just do it. And then as this, all this information started rolling in, it became a, a different equation. Rob can't reach me from there, probably can influence me later, but what's important to me tonight is if I can get consensus on the repair of Turbin Four. There are some projects that are in flight that we would potentially suspend if you don't want to do other steam, like hotwell pumps. If we knew we were going to wind down steam, we probably would not advance some projects that are in the books for '24 this year. So if we need some level, or if we need to try to address concerns, not that I want another guest appearance, but six, the, the longer term, we have till 2027, and I guess what I would probably do is stack, say it was like, we're only going to do what we have to, to get through the generating season and bring some of those, like the hotwell pumps and stuff at the end, but in theory, as we go into the 2025 budget, we have, need to have some sense to like, plan on, you know, this level of maintenance in the, in the turbine account. But really, what's pressing now is a decision on four.
Thank you for hurting us back there. Okay.
Well, yes, and in terms of it being conservative, I was, I was concerned that it wasn't conservative enough, because there was no factor in there for the unknown, which is, I would think, pretty likely.
Yeah, we...
So you threw an extra 850 in there, so I mean...
Well, okay, yeah.
We just...
And four, yeah.
We, we threw an 850 in there, I think the team, and I say the team, was the VMO, Tim, Nicholas and I, and we honestly believe that there will be some other unexpected event, I mean, again, it's 70-plus years old now.
Yeah.
One of the boilers is, I think, 83 years old now, so it's going to be at the 90 mark when we get to the end of this period. So I mean, we can't tell you with certainty what that's going to be, but we all collectively agree that there will be other unplanned repairs.
Right, but I was referring more to the, the cost estimate on number four.
Oh, yeah.
Which there, you mentioned it, but there is no factor, and they're like, oh, let's just assume another 10% overage or something. So, it, it, as we've all said, it could be worse.
Brian? What is the oldest operating piece of equipment, not that we have, but that you're aware of? Like, how long can you fix these? Like, do people have 110-year-old turbines?
Oh, I'm, I'm quite confident that, I don't know if someone has a 110-year-old, but I will tell you, the company that services that feels strongly that they can keep this thing running as long as we want to support it. That it's like, they, they can re-reverse engineer the parts and pieces that go into it. I will tell you that at some point in the future, that the technical expertise of the person that can do this is like disappearing quickly. So the company we're using has one sage person who's much older than me, and I'm like, when you leave, how's this working? He's like, "I don't know what they're going to do," because like, he's literally the...
The guy.
The guy.
Now, that scares me, one point of...
Well, there's other steam turbine companies out there, but what I'm saying is like, this lets, again, and you're, this was, some of this was put in in the 30s, the 40s and the 60s, so it's, again, it's a, it's self-retiring itself, and that expertise that was dedicated to that type of technology is also retiring.
Yeah.
There's other, I don't want to say that he, this company is the only one that can do it, there's other companies, but this company's been very responsive and technically knowledgeable in the repair of this equipment, that's why we went to them.
And does that also mean the cost of repair goes up when there's more scarcity on who can repair these? Or is everybody going to be retiring theirs and...
I, yeah, that's, I don't know how to answer, like definitively.
Both could happen.
I think it might take longer, because we might have to find someone that's not as local, or find some, somewhere other part of the country that can come and look at it, but there's other companies, and I didn't want to say that they're the only people. But what I've seen is there's fewer individuals that have direct experience on this type of equipment.
Yeah, I mean, why would you invest in a career in that, right?
Right, because it's good, it's not this, that's not where it's going to be 20 years from now.
So, I heard a bunch of scenario threes over here, that where you guys are too? On the left side here, yeah? Two? Tina, I'm not seeing, you're not sure yet?
No, I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a bad decision. Yeah. I think it was important, though, I think at some point, I thought there was a discussion of the two positions that potentially could be lost from moving to steam generation, that they would be absorbed into other aspects of the organization.
Yeah, well, we've, this is still in flight, so we have one, one of those two positions is vacant right now. And with, working with the VMO, until we get some direction from you, we're holding off on filling that position, or until we have a time to discuss with the superintendent a staffing plan. So one of those two positions currently vacant, literally right now, and we've, we've, we were recruiting internally and externally for it, and we've talked to, actually, some of the employees that are here tonight, we've fallen that until we get policy direction, have a chance to revisit it, we're not going to fill that position. There's, without violating anybody's confidentiality, there's probably one or two people that would retire by the 1-1-27 date.
If it's one, we can work with the other to...
Right, I mean...
Transition until they're ready, right?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think when we, we met with staff, and we, I say we, me and the VMO and myself and Nicholas, believe that this can be done through attrition.
Yeah, and I, you know, obviously, that gets into personnel discussions, and that's not really for public discussion, but I think it is important, given, you know, there's impacts to these decisions. Not that it's not the right way to go.
So I think we have some consensus here that option, scenario three is the direction you're going to be heading in.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
I'm not happy about it.
Thank you.
You know me, I, I love the toys, but, but...
It wasn't reached lightly, if that's any consolation.
I know, I mean, when you had the boiler in, it's just, it's the kiss of death, there's no doubt that you can't, you can't do both. And Brian, I'm not questioning your expertise, but, you know, when I see big numbers like that with nothing to substantiate them, I do get a little nervous, and I just want to make sure that you guys weren't being too, too, too cautious.
No. Again, I think, so, not that I want to revisit the decision every month or year, but so, four, we put the lid back on it, it's mothballed in place. We wouldn't actually proceed, well, I will share the, the direction we're headed with IMEA, but we would not give, we'll give formal notice that four is not going to be repaired. And we would not give any notice of retirement on the other steam units until a later date in the future.
Gotcha.
We're only required to give one year, so that if there is a change in the economics, we could revisit the decision. But in absence of a revisit, we would, when we present the August, in August, we present the budget, we would not be doing turbine seven overhaul...
Right.
In '25.
Okay. So, sounds good.
And thank...
All right, well, thanks, guys, good job.
And your team.
Lots of information.
Yeah, it's, you've done a remarkable job with this.
Okay. Now, I have item number four on the agenda, which is closed session. I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing probable or imminent litigation pursuant to 2C 11 of the Openness Meetings Act. Under the motion, when we adjourn the closed session, the open meeting will automatically and immediately adjourn as well, without the conduct of any further business or comments. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Appitok?
Yes.
Trustee Dolman?
Yes.
Trustee Alvinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Orsec?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Any other scenarios? Thank you.